Let's do the numbers. Dow, S and P and NASDAQ futures are all down in the two to six tenths percent range, with Dow futures down 102 points. The yield on the 10-year Treasury is 4.4%. Non-alcoholic beer is becoming more popular every year. Globally, sales grew 9% in 2024. Meanwhile, sales of regular beer fell, fell 1%. Of course, this is according to the beverage data analytics company IWSR. Out of the different categories of beer, alcoholic lager is by far and away number one in terms of volume, but non-alcoholic beer is on track to snatch the number two spot currently held by ale by the end of this year. That said, the non-alcoholic stuff still only has about 2% market share compared to lagers 92%. Marketplace's Samantha Fields has more.
It used to be if you wanted a non-alcoholic beer, there weren't a whole lot of options, and they didn't really taste like beer. But Kaylee Tharyault at Nielsen IQ says that's not the case anymore.
I've done blind taste testing of an alcohol beer and it's non-alcohol variant, and it's a struggle for me to tell the difference between the two from a flavor perspective. They're that good.
That is a big reason more people are drinking non-alcoholic beer these days.
Ten, fifteen years ago, the only thing that was available was O'Doul's and a couple European brands, and there weren't really any options that were aspirational or cool.
Mark Cardnessen at Rabobank says now there are a bunch of brands making non-alcoholic craft beers, and major beer companies have offerings too. And lots of people who also drink regular beer are buying them.
I go to conferences for work. I don't like having a second drink in those situations because I just want to have my wits about me.
And he says non-alcoholic beer is an easy way to do that without standing out. I'm Samantha Fields for Marketplace.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Bitwarden Password Manager. From road trips to tropical adventures, Bitwarden is designed to protect family accounts and devices anywhere. Available at bitwarden.com. And by Schwab. Schwab offers investors choices like full-service wealth management, self-directed investing options, and trading on Thinkorswim. More at schwab.com.
Among the proposals for the tax bill that Republicans in Congress are still putting together is something we've more often seen from Democratic legislators. The idea of giving out money for newborn babies. So-called Trump Accounts, previously known as Money Accounts for Growth and Advancement, or MAGA accounts, would include a one-time deposit of $1,000 for every American baby born. That would be invested and held in the stock market. For more on this, we've got Sam Taub, lead writer on investing for NerdWallet. Good morning.
Good morning.
Who gets the free seed contribution?
In general, a child has to be a U.S. citizen. They have to be at least two years old on January 1st, 2026, which is the first date on which these accounts will be available, and they have to have at least one parent with a work-eligible Social Security number. There's different criteria for what they're calling the Newborn Pilot Program for MAGA accounts, which is the type that gets this $1,000 seed contribution. Those are for U.S. citizen children who are born between January 1st, 2024, and December 31st, 2028. And to be eligible for those, you have to have two parents with work-eligible Social Security numbers.
So you have these accounts, you don't pay taxes on the money that you put in them at first. What happens when you take the money out? When do you take the money out, and what are you supposed to use it for?
Account holders are not supposed to take distributions until they're at least 18. And then between ages 18 to 25, they can access up to half of the funds for certain specific purposes: higher education, training programs, small business loans, or first-time home purchases. Between 25 and 30, they can withdraw the full balance of the account, but just for those limited purposes. And then after age 30, they're allowed to withdraw the full balance of the account for any reason. Distributions taken for those qualified purposes are taxed as long-term capital gains, while distributions for other purposes are taxed as ordinary income. And it's worth pausing here to point out that this tax advantage is not really that much of a tax advantage in that the situation that I just described is pretty similar to the tax situation you'd get by just putting money into a regular taxable brokerage account and investing it in stocks for at least a year and a day.
There are other ways of doing this on your own. Are there not sort of types of savings accounts that one could open for your kids?
There are a few different options. It's worth noting that many states actually already offer similar funding programs for 529 plans, and in some cases, the amount of free money on offer through those state programs is actually quite a bit more than $1,000 per child. Granted, some of those state programs have income limits, so the proposed accounts, in their current form at least, may offer a little more flexibility than a lot of existing options in terms of income-based eligibility.
Sam Taub is with NerdWallet. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me on.
In New York, I'm Sabri Ben Ashor with the Marketplace Morning Report. From APM, American Public Media.
In Russia, the influence of the Orthodox Church has grown under Vladimir Putin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our 9:00 a.m. informal session of Roanoke City Council and our joint meeting with the Roanoke City Planning Commission. We're really happy to have you all here today. Appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules to join with us in this meeting. City Council meetings are televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. So at this time, I'm going to ask our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call roll for council.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
Mr. Volason. And Mayor Cobb.
Here, and a quorum is present. Chair Martin?
Okay, Ms. Bumgarner, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Terry Kapler sends his regrets for the day. Mr. Oshene.
Here.
Mr. Settle.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Wolf.
Here.
And Chair Martin.
Here. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, I'm pleased to welcome the Planning Commission. We do appreciate your time and your service to the city in this really important role. Grateful for the work that you do and looking forward to our conversation today. So Chair Martin?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Couple of things I'd like to say just before we get started. First of all, on behalf of the Planning Commission, thank you to city council members for meeting with us. I think it's important that we get together once a year just to make sure we're on the same page and to make sure, since we're looking at the same issues, that you know where we're coming from on some of those that are important. Also, I think it's one of the things I've always wanted to say is how much we on the Planning Commission appreciate the exemplary work that our staff does to support our role. There's no way that we could be as effective as we are without their help, their teaching, their understanding, their education. So thank you to the amazing staff we have in the city of Roanoke to help with these decisions and to help inform us so we can make smart ones. And that is it. Thank you to the Planning Commission members, too. You guys are just terrific to serve with, so I really do appreciate that.
So one other thing I'd like to share is, especially for people who may be watching, one of the key roles that the Planning Commission works with us on is, and staff, is implementing our 2040 City Plan. And I noticed the large plan that Catherine has with her right there. But also in the audience today here in the chambers, we have brand-new interns for the city of Roanoke that are with us for the summer, and I'd like for them to stand just so we can recognize them and thank them for spending time with us this summer. Thank you all. And now I believe we have a presentation we want to dive into.
Let's do it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you so much. So today, we're going to do an overview of the comprehensive plan process and past plans that we've had in the city of Roanoke over the past 100 years. Some elements of City Plan 2040 particularly: the role and process work of the Planning Commission. Why are they here? How do they serve? What is it that they do for the city of Roanoke? The policy basis of all PC recommendations. So when they come to you, there are recommendations, and they are for certain reasons, and we'll talk about that. Then we'll talk about the zoning reform that we have been working on for the past year, particularly the part to address housing affordability. And then we will talk about the future goals of our Planning Commission. To start out, I always like to talk to everyone about our history of planning work within the city of Roanoke, because interestingly enough, the history of planning work started not with city government. It started with the people. And so the 1907 Plan remodeling Roanoke was paid for by a local women's group. They hired someone, brought him into town to work on planning how Roanoke can best be developed so people could live their best lives here. The city of Roanoke then went back in 1928 and hired the same planner again, and he did more work. And so, and then we have other comprehensive plans over the years that unfolded from that. But when we look at those original plans, one of the things that I think is most interesting is that we have a, we have something in there that talks about what we would call today greenways, the land along the Roanoke River. It said, "There's no time like the present to buy this land and make it an amenity for the people." It took us 100 years to do it, but we did get it done, and people love it. And so it's one of the huge assets within our community. But that's reflective of what planning work is about. It is not short term. It is long term. It is visionary, and it unfolds over decades. So the comprehensive plan, and you know, why start with the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan is something that we do approximately every 20 years, and it really is a contract between the city of Roanoke and the people of the city of Roanoke for how is it that we want our community to grow and develop over time? And then we use this comprehensive plan as a measure for how we're doing while the comprehensive plan is in effect. So the comprehensive plan is something that is both in-house and community effort. And when we look at doing this plan, it's such a large plan that all of our planning commissioners were involved. Each planning commissioner had a different element that they worked on over the years that we were working on this. We involved all of the planning staff on this, and so I just want to give call out to Wayne Lefwitch. Actually, our planning manager led the comprehensive plan process within the city of Roanoke at that time. And then we have people such as Philip Moore, who's currently our zoning administrator, Jillian Moore, who was our zoning administrator at the time, currently our director. We had Brittany Gardner. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort because it's a lot of work. It takes years of planning, and then it takes about three years of interacting with the public, and it's an iterative process. And so we work together to get big ideas, and then we work together to refine those again and again and again until we get something that is supported by the community and move forward. So that happened over a three-year process, and it was adopted in late 2020. So what is part of that plan? And so there are really four big ideas within the plan itself. And so one of those talks about the physical development of our community. So it's physical development, environment and economy, people, and then how our government works. But within physical development, which is mostly what we're going to focus on today, we talk about complete neighborhoods. We talk about missing middle housing, and we talk about neighborhood centers. And then breaking that down further, we have six themes. And this came out of a best practice from the American Planning Association about some things to focus on to make sure that we're looking at things holistically and not leaving anything out that needs to be considered. Interwoven equity is one of our themes. Healthy community, harmony with nature, livable built environment, responsible regionalism, and resilient economy. And then we have some elements that are in part of all of our comprehensive plans as well that talk about city design, and those are land use, transportation, and urban design. And so when we look at one of these particular themes, interwoven equity, within the plan itself, we have a broad description of what that interwoven equity is. And then we have the priorities, and we talk about trust. We talk about breaking the cycle of poverty. We talk about neighborhood choice. We talk about inclusive culture, and we talk about service delivery. And then with each of those priorities, we go down into policies. And an example of a policy within this, with an equity of neighborhood choice, a policy is identify and remove barriers to housing choice. And there are three action items that are under that policy. And one of the action items is reconsider housing policy to remove exclusionary single-family districts. And so that was one of the actions within our comprehensive plan. So what is the Planning Commission really here for? And the comprehensive plan is one of the big pieces, parts and pieces of that. And so our Planning Commission actually works to prepare, put that together, to recommend adoption, and then to really stand as a guardian of that. They promote it to the public. They are the ones who review amendments to it. And when we think about our comprehensive plan, it's helpful to think about it as an umbrella plan. And so underneath our comprehensive plan, we have things such as neighborhood plans. We have things such as transportation plans. And so all of those plans are just chapters and elements within that overall comprehensive plan. They also look at the zoning ordinance and try to bring the zoning ordinance into alignment with that comprehensive plan, and they also look at making map amendments. Some other things that they look at are subdivision regulations and looking at CIP projects, stewardship of historical landmarks, and any other design standards or guidelines related to public right-of-way. So when our Planning Commission sits down to look at a zoning amendment that comes before them, they are charged to look at some particular things. And so those are listed on there. So they're always looking at what is the need and justification to make this change? Is there a clear need, a clear nexus? What is the effect of the change on the property and on the surrounding community? What amount of undeveloped land in that area exists that could already hold that use? Is there something there or not? And then how does this tie in to our overall comprehensive plan? And so anything that comes to city council after it's reviewed by Planning Commission has always been reviewed for all of these things. We also have a lot of outreach to our community that we do as part of this, and outreach to other departments and organizations. And you see some of those departments that are listed on there. All of these different groups review any of the zoning amendments that come before us and have opportunity to make comment and have discussion, and that gets incorporated into the recommendation to our city council. Within the last fiscal year to date, so typically we go July all the way through June, and so this is through May, we so far to date have looked at 12 zoning amendment applications and made recommendations to council for those. We have looked at three right-of-way vacations. Two were recommended, and one was withdrawn by an applicant. We have done three, or sorry, two zoning code amendments and then, and recommended those for a total of 16 items. And so you might think, well, 16 items, maybe that's not a lot, but that's very broad work. And so... And so now I'm going to jump to two of those items that I just mentioned. That actually took a lot of work for our Planning Commission as they went over these things again and again, wanting to make sure that this was in compliance with our comprehensive plan. So zoning text amendments, 2024. And so there were some zoning text amendments that were adopted in March of 2024, and then ones that were a lot the same but re-adopted or adopted in, I believe it was September of 2024 as well. So in those, we were particularly looking at zoning reform for complete neighborhoods. And so again, as I had mentioned, this was part of our interwoven equity that we talked about from the beginning. It was part of our livable built environment, parts of our comprehensive plan. And so really looking to go in and removing the barrier to housing choice, making sure there was a range of housing types within each part of the community and that there was varied affordable and accessible housing. And so this was all developed in outreach during the comprehensive plan process, and so with thousands of citizens within our community and why it was a key element within our plan. And so you see at the bottom left-hand corner, the top housing concerns in Roanoke. These were the things that were the top housing concerns when we were working on the comprehensive plan and still remain our top housing concerns within Roanoke. So all of the work that we do as staff and as Planning Commission really always involves a lot of outreach. Anytime anything comes into us, it always goes out to the community. Anyone is always able to sign up for civic send and to be able to get access to communications on so many different things within the city of Roanoke government, sent out to them whenever it comes in. And the same is true with Planning Commission. So speaking just with Planning Commission, again, we always send things out to the community. We have opportunity for comment. For staff is always available for people to talk to, and our planning commissioners, you know, are there to hear and be... you know, are there to hear and be ears as well. Particularly for the text amendments, we did a lot of outreach. We did a lot of public meetings, a lot of face-to-face stakeholder meetings. We did a lot with our social media. We did a lot with our websites that people went to, again, reaching out over all of these different forms of mediums to thousands of our citizens. And so in a summary, this is just a brief summary of what those pages of text amendments were that we really looked at in March of 2024 and adopted, and our planning commission reviewed in August of 2024. Council reviewed it and approved it one month later in September. And all of these were to move forward and implement the goals of City Plan 2040. And so in that, you'll see things such as allowing all dwelling types in all of our residential districts and regulate them instead of by saying something's allowed or not allowed, letting it be by district, lot size, and location. And so looking at the development standards for dwelling types, looking at the definition of family, looking at what the minimum lot size were in different areas. It had expanded over the years from what it was originally developed as, and it went back to a more traditional pattern. Expanding the ability to have things such as adult daycare and family day homes, and the creation of our urban center zoning district. You'll remember that Riverdale and our development in Norwich. Now we have two zoning districts, which is the urban center district that lets them develop out more fully. And then updating our tables to better align with each other. And so those were the overall things. Again, we're trying to make it easier to have different forms of housing in different parts of our community. And here to talk to us in more detail about it today is Wayne Lefwitch, our planning manager, who has put together some numbers for us.
I'm going to stand in the podium since Mr. Terry Catherine is not here. I'm going to sit down and join you if that's okay. And you all know me, Wayne Lefwitch, planning manager at the city, but mayor, vice mayor, council, chair, planning commission, pleased to be here today to present some numbers. When the city adopted the text amendments in March and then again in September, one of the things planning staff promised was that we would be back, we would keep an eye on this, these numbers, and we would come back with a yearly report of what we saw. And so we've been able to look at all the permits that have come in that have created new residential units and identify them as to whether they were affected by the change of the text amendments or not. And so we've got some good overall news. We have a lot of total units. We are actually up on single unit dwelling development. We are looking at from March 2024 to March 2025, 123 single-unit dwellings developed. That would be higher than most years. Typically, we're, you know, we're lucky to get to 90. I think last year, if we look back, we probably broke 100. It looks like this will break 100 again. Again, this is not exactly apples to apples because typically we look at a calendar year when we do those numbers. So when I looked back and we were looking at a calendar year, and again, this is from March to March, so specifically to identify the changes as a result of the text amendments. But our big growth has been in multifamily dwellings. Again, not affected by the text amendments themselves, but we do have some pretty large apartment complexes that are in the permitting process. We have, on Orange Avenue, we have 768 apartments that are planned. In Riverdale, we have 267 apartments that are planned. And then Herschberger Meadows, Catherine's pointing them out on the map there, we have 170 units planned. And then a smaller development, but still substantial, Trinity Commons and Old Southwest, 15 units. So that makes up the bulk of the multifamily unit numbers. As you look at the map, you'll see the single-unit dwellings not affected by the text amendment changes are the yellow dots. The multifamily not affected by the change are the orange dots. And then what we're really here to talk about today are the red dots. Those represent the missing middle housing that we've been able to achieve or hope to achieve. Not all of these are built yet. These are all in some process of the permitting process, but we hope that they do get built. And what we are primarily seeing in that group are accessory dwelling units and duplexes. We do have a large apartment complex on Richelieu that was planned, originally planned to be 36 units, which would have been, you know, 22 additional units than what would have been allowed prior to the text amendment changes. That particular property is zoned RM2, so even before last March, it would have allowed 14 units by right. With the text amendment changes, they can get up to 36 units. And speaking with the developer most recently, they are actually redesigning it, looking at up to, well, at least 22 units on the site is the next plan. So we're not exactly sure how many units we will get there. So and that's kind of reflected in these tables that you'll see as well. All in all, though, if we look at the extra units created from the text amendments, we're guessing between 26 to 40 units. If you recall, when we spoke to you all about the text amendments and we made estimates on what we thought we would see in a year, actually, our high number we put out there was 40 units. So in a lot of ways, we're right in line with what we expected to happen. I will point out while we're still on this map, Catherine's getting ready to change it. One of the things that I think is important to notice on this map is we are seeing a lot of new single-unit dwellings really scattered throughout the city, and the missing middle also scattered throughout the city. But if you look, you'll see that those missing middles are occurring, again, those are the red dots. They are occurring in areas that are pretty built out where we are not seeing new single-unit dwellings. And so they are creating a product that otherwise we don't think would be being created. You'll see that if you look in the map, you'll see the Old Southwest area, South Roanoke area. You know, that is where we're seeing a lot of these, really build some new units within areas that otherwise are fairly built out. You can go to the next slide, please. Again, this just focuses in on where those are occurring, and we do have some pictures. We have one that's built, duplex on the top left there of the screen. We have another duplex that sort of has a townhouse-looking facade. And then on the bottom there, you actually see a side profile of a duplex with a additional unit in the rear. And this is a street that has street frontage on both the front and the rear. So it created three units on what would have previously been most likely just a single unit. So again, these are the changes that we hope to see, and so we're really excited that we are seeing some of this type of development within the community. I'll turn it back to Catherine.
And then talking, speaking again as future goals. And so advancing volumes two and three of our City Plan 2040 would be to start updating our neighborhood plans, work that we are very excited to start, focusing on our future target area first, and then working with our other city departments on functional plans. So there's our arts and cultural plan and on street design. To continue promoting City Plan 2040, again, our agreement between each other as far as how we want our city to grow and develop. And then to onboard and educate commission members. And so after we have an appointment of new commissioners, five of our seven commissioners will be new. And so that is work to bring everybody up to speed and so moving forward in the same direction. And so thank you for our members who are continuing to serve, and thank you for our new members who we look forward to working with for many years. It is definitely a commitment, and so, and they're doing a fabulous job at that. So that is all.
Well, thank you for that great overview and update on where we are with the zoning amendments and the progress being made. This is really an opportunity for us to ask questions, whether it's related to the presentation, and thank you for preparing that, or just conversation between us and the commissioners. So and this applies not just to council members, it can be commissioners too. So questions or comments? Ms. Pars.
So the one that's just got the circle with the house.
Yeah, the red, reddish-orange color, I guess with the house, those are the missing, those are the ones affected by the text amendment changes.
Is that just single house or is that single and multi?
So it can be both. So for example, there are some of those dots that represent three units because we have a duplex on the front of the lot and a unit on the back. And most of them are accessory dwelling units where you're getting just one additional unit where there's an existing single-unit dwelling. And then a lot of them are duplexes where you either did not have a unit before, where you had a unit and now you have two.
So that example would be like what's out on Franklin Road, the townhouses with the one single house in that, is that correct?
Right, I think yes, if I'm thinking of the right example, yes.
Is it the one at Avonham and Franklin you're thinking about?
I think so.
Yes.
That was a zoning amendment for a PUV that allowed that particular one. And so, but over here too, I also mentioned that Wayne has the spreadsheet, and so probably developed in Excel.
Yes.
And so as far as the impacted projects, that breaks down the number that were ADUs, the number that were the duplexes, and you know, two dwellings, three dwellings. So you see most of them are just very small additions to the community.
So like the housing that's over on King Street, Kings Walk, I believe is the name of it, those are all single-family homes, correct?
Allowed by right, yes.
And then the same off of King Street, go back off of King Street, I can't remember the name of that subdivision, but they're building newer homes back in there.
Right.
So the current zoning, would that affect those areas? If anybody wanted to change something in there, would that be a change? Would that be allowed in those?
It impacts all of the areas within our city, and particularly things that we see, I think most often throughout, have been the accessory dwelling units. And the accessory dwelling units were things that were allowed from the 2021 text amendment change. And so that's something that we've been able to see the impact of over the past four years.
Thank you for clarifying that with me.
Any questions? Mr. Hagan?
So, sorry. So for the 2021 change to 2024 change here, is, what was 2023 and 2022? Is that significantly like different or, because you know, looking at just four to 36 is like, I'm not going to do that math right now, but like, yeah, 900% increase. So I'm wondering what the 2023 and 2022 was.
Specifically with what changes we saw from the text amendments that allowed accessory dwelling units by right in residential districts. I don't have those numbers in front of me. We did see small numbers of accessory dwelling units throughout that period of time. And then some of the text amendment changes we made, this most recently, have allowed accessory dwelling units in other districts as well, and also creating, making it a little bit easier to do those. But we can certainly report back those numbers. One of the things we're going to do going forward is continue to keep track of these missing middle numbers, and then also start to make sure on an annual basis, we are keeping track of all the housing units created in the city so that we can keep an eye on trends.
I would also add to that the 2021 text amendment change also opened up housing opportunity within our commercial districts. It used to be that housing was restricted and not allowed in our commercial districts as it is today. And so we have had a number of different apartment units which are now allowed by right from that 2021 change. And one example of that you would see up at Herschberger where there was an old hotel project.
So when you say by right, do you mean that there wouldn't be any sort of process there to ensure that a neighborhood, say, a neighborhood group had concerns about something new coming in? Would there not be any sort of like public hearing or anything like that as a result?
If it is by right, then it would be in complete compliance with our zoning regulations and would not require a public hearing, correct?
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to confirm something for Mr. Hagan. When Kings Walks got it new built, I asked the same question. I said, I haven't heard anything about this. And Ms. Gray said, by right, that's what it got built.
And I also want to ask, where have you seen the largest growth in the city? Which area of the city?
I mean, I think as you look at the map, it's fairly spread out, although we are seeing a lot, I would say, in northeast. At the large apartment complex I mentioned earlier on Orange Avenue, over 700 units, and then a lot of sort of traditional subdivision development just south of that as well.
Thank you.
Question. What do we know how many of these new developments that are either in the permitting process or that are currently being built or have been built? If they're low-income, what is it, working-class housing, if it's more quote-unquote affordable? And I know that's a very broad term because affordable is different depending upon how much you make, right? But when we all think about the basic idea of an affordable place to live, how many of those fit into that bracket?
And we are familiar with some that are based off of some subsidy they receive are affordable. So we do know, for example, Trinity Commons is affordable housing for seniors. That's 15 units in Old Southwest. What we don't know about are some of the accessory dwelling unit or duplexes. But what we propose is that an accessory dwelling unit by our zoning ordinance cannot be more than 800 square feet. And so if you look at how we appraise properties traditionally, you know, it is a cost per square foot. So just by the size of that unit being smaller, its rent or sale price would be less, right? And so when we see these larger houses being split into duplexes, we assume there's a certain amount of affordability there, and it may not necessarily be HUD-level affordability. We're not sure. But we do suggest that because of their smaller size, that they would likely be a lower rent, lower price. Likewise, we also recognize, as we discussed a lot when we developed these text amendments, a need for units within the city, right? We found we had a gap of units. We suggested at the time, we needed 4,000 units to fill that gap. And so all the new units that we're seeing are helping us sort of balance the market demand because if there's a demand for something, that price will go up until you have the supply to meet that demand. So what we are trying to do here and what we hope we are seeing is us getting more units to help meet that demand to satisfy, or to meet the supply to satisfy the demand.
That actually happened in Austin, Texas, which was having a really bad affordability crisis, and they built so many units that rents are starting to come down just organically.
So the 4,000 that you said you were short of, was your goal? Did you care if it was single-family, multi, townhouses? It's just you want it to have 4,000 places that people could live? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say within that 4,000 need, there certainly is preference within it for different folks, want different types of units. We did see a need for actual smaller units. One-bedrooms were a big part of that demand. And so, but whether it's a single-unit dwelling on a property by itself or an accessory dwelling unit or a multifamily unit, we didn't necessarily get in that nuance other than the need showed we had a need for smaller units.
I could understand that. I'm in that situation right now, can't find anything.
I would just say that developers also respond to what the market demand is. So if you look downtown, for example, you'll see that the housing they're developing downtown is primarily single-bedroom residences, and they're smaller.
And they're smaller, and they're being utilized by older people, or by young couples, or young singles. So, that's what's being developed downtown. And as the market demand changes, they're going to respond to that as well, and will create two-bedroom, three-bedroom places as more people are looking for those kinds of things.
And single, one level.
Right. Yeah. It doesn't do any good to create a need, or create something, and then try to drive a need to it. You have to respond to it if you're a developer. And most of them are pretty astute about doing that, taking the temperature of the market before they get going on a construction project.
Mr. Mayor. I had a question, I don't know maybe who would be, I'd like, wonder if anyone has any thoughts. So, on the zoning reforms that we're talking about, would you say the priority is creating more housing units? Because I've also heard a lot of conversation, when we list out the priorities, we say more affordable housing units. So, is it quantity overall that's the priority? Affordable housing, is that, would you say that's more the priority? Or is it both equal parts? And if so, how are you, how are we striking that balance? And I have a specific project in mind as a follow-up I wanted to ask about.
So, as I mentioned before, we believe that if we have more units built, that that will affect the market price of housing generally, right? So, one way for us to achieve more affordability is to meet the demand with more supply, right? So, that keeps your skyrocketing of prices, kind of levels that a little. We also recognize that smaller units are, generally speaking, going to be more affordable, right? So, 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit is going to rent for less than a 2,000-square-foot house, right, on its own lot, generally speaking. And these are all assumptions. And they are assumptions we are making, because we do not have control over what the price of those units will be, and what it will be set at. Unless we are working with our dollars or other partners' dollars to subsidize those units. And there's certainly a good amount of that. And if we had our way, we would, you know, we'd get an extra couple million dollars from the federal government, so we could do more subsidy of affordable housing, and guarantee that. But that's not what we have, and so, we have to look creatively. What we found is best practice across the country is to support the development of missing-middle housing that develops things such as accessory dwelling units, more duplexes, small apartment buildings, because that creates affordability. So, that's what our goal was with the most recent round of zoning text amendments.
I would really appreciate if we have any studies showing, and maybe the example that Mr. Settle mentioned from Austin, about where we could see actual data on how this is playing out. And the project I wanted to ask about is the project you mentioned on Richelieu, where, because it sounds to me, from your answer, that the priority is more on, when we say missing middle, that we're not really talking about affordability, but we mean just the number and quantity of the units. So, that's good to hear clarified. And I guess my, I personally am concerned about that project on Richelieu, and I wonder if anyone on the Planning Commission would be able to give sort of supportive thoughts or opinions on that, because of the new zoning amendments, it did not go through the Planning Commission and City Council approval process that it normally would have. And my concern with that is that what we're seeing is the removal of a lot of units that are, again, to Mr. Nash's point, how we define affordability is sometimes a bit subjective, but the units that were just demolished for South Roanoke, for the Crystal Spring neighborhood, were relatively affordable. And we have a lot of folks that are wanting to live in that area, that work in the service industry, that work in the hospital. Transportation is a huge issue that I'd also like to hear your thoughts on. How are we going to make sure that these 800 new units down on Javenu are connected? But, to the Richelieu project, what we're seeing is the removal of a large number of affordable units, to be replaced by likely units that will be marketplace, much more expensive and unaffordable to the people that were living there. And that's not even speaking to the impact of the neighborhood streetscape character. We could have a debate about whether we think we want, you know, tall apartment building in place of what's there. So, I just wonder if anyone could speak to that, or had any thoughts? Because I'm worried that we could see more of those kinds of projects in other neighborhoods as we start to see, to the point, we're talking about market shift. We have a lot of really low-income neighborhoods that are adjacent to parts of Roanoke that could really explode with development. Adjacent southeast, adjacent to downtown, the Riverdale project, parts of Gainesboro, off of Williamson Road. So, what would you say to constituents who are nervous about developers being able to come into their neighborhood and clear a half-block or more, and build units that change the scale of the neighborhood and that they can't afford to live in, and that there is now not a process for them to voice their concerns through the Planning Commission and City Council process?
Yeah, and I think it was both a question to ask if anyone had comments, and then I think at the end, there was a question back to staff. So, let me address that. So, in that particular project, remember that is zoned RM2, because it sits in one of our neighborhood center areas. So, when you're at Crystal Springs, that neighborhood commercial area, you know, you would turn around, the way I always describe this, is if I was in another community, and I was at a neighborhood center area, at a restaurant, or at a small grocery store, and I turned around, and there was a two- or three-story apartment building there, for me, that would feel in the right place, right? And that's what we're doing with our RM2 zoning. It tends to be just around the neighborhood center areas, as we try to support that type of development within the city. By right, before the zoning text amendment changes, that would have allowed 14 units. So, we would suggest that by allowing it to be 22, or it could be up to 36, if it is able to do that, we would get more units, which, again, reaches your point about a desire for people wanting to live in that community, whether they work service industry, work at the hospital, whether they're doctors at the hospital, there's a need for people to live in that community.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I just don't think that that housing that's going to come in is going to be for those folks that are currently living in that level of, that price point. And I've heard some folks say, you know, "We have to crack some eggs to make an omelet." And I guess, that's okay if you're the one eating the omelet, but what about the eggs? You know, I'm concerned about those people that got kicked out, and are not going to be able, I would suspect, to be able to afford to move back into that neighborhood. So, it's just a concern I have.
That's fair. But I'd just point out, it was RM2 zoned, so it is sort of unique, not something that...
The project would have had to go through the Planning Commission previously, though?
For more than 14.
Correct. So, what is proposed and being built would have had to go, previously, under the previous zoning, would have had to go through the Planning Commission. Gotcha.
Great, yes.
I'd like to speak to that. In theory, I had discussed it as it was going down, and, you know, I'm really sad to lose that brick quad on the corner. It was, that's a really iconic building, and we should be building way more of those. But the rest of them, and all of them, pretty much, were ill-maintained and under-rented, because they were the product of a family, you know, inheritance, and person that owned them was ready to move on and be done with it, you know? It's, at the end of the day, it's an asset that you have to deal with, and there were so many that came along that wanted to buy it. And if every neighborhood endures, like, a change like that, a small amount of change, it can ripple throughout the whole city, where everybody basically does their part just a little bit to accept some of this change, that we have more units and more density and the kind of housing that we want. I understand that, yeah, the people that was living, that were living in those apartments won't be able, probably won't be able to afford, but if there's more units, then the prices will come down. But those are sort of outliers, because they were, it just wasn't really sustainable to, like, those properties weren't really that well-maintained, and they weren't really originally designed as multifamily either, outside of the quad. But the other three duplexes were just chopped-up houses. So, they were, you know, they probably didn't have central air, and they probably were kind of awkward floor plans and stuff like that.
I'll just address that as well. I mean, I know that Velford, that nobody's planning on doing there, he told me what he was planning on doing long before he actually began the project, when it was in its conceptual stage. And I agree with what James was saying. The property itself really was not a stronghold. They were iconic-looking brick buildings, but on the inside, they weren't, they weren't modernized, they needed a great deal of work. And one of the things that any developer's going to have to do is look at the economic feasibility of what they're doing. We just have to be mindful of that. We can't tell them what to do with their property and what they can't do with the property, as long as they are operating within their by-right agreements. But if they want to do something different, that's when we do have to take a look at it. And I can't say what the Planning Commission would have done, but I can tell you what I would have done. And looking at the plans for what he planned on doing there, my opinion was that it was going to improve dramatically the economic energy of the area of that little neighborhood where that is. And it is a neighborhood center. It's one that I actually grew up in, back when it was Lipes Pharmacy and Tinnell's. I was down there all the time. When I started buying Slurpees, at that 7-Eleven, they cost 10 cents. I was down there all the time. And I think that it's going to improve that a great deal, because it's going to have newer housing in, and it's just a fact of economic development life, that there are older buildings that come down, and there are newer buildings that go up, when it's in the best interest of the community and a developer to do it that way. And we can lament those, but unless somebody wants to go in and buy them, and spend the money to restore them to what they were before, that's just the way it's going to play out. And I guess we see that in other areas as well. We just need to be mindful of it.
I want to comment on a couple things. Another part of what you presented had to do with neighborhood centers and neighborhood plans. And I know that many of the neighborhoods are eager to be a part of that process. So, can you talk a little bit more about how that's beginning, and what the engagement will be, not only with existing neighborhood organizations, but also, more broadly, the people who live in different neighborhoods, and them having access to share their ideas and thoughts about those plans?
Thank you. That's something that we have been looking forward to for many years. But we have been operating at less than minimal staffing for a number of years as well. And so, we were fortunate to be able to hire Colette Bumgarner, about six months ago. And we're looking forward to also being able to hire a preservation planner, starting in July. And so, and at that time, we'll have the opportunity to have staff time to be able to delve into the neighborhood planning process. This is something that we had talked a lot about with the communities, and you will see a lot more of the unfolding of particular, I'm going to say, urban form, that each particular neighborhood community should take. And those will be conversations that will be happening with each of the communities. All of the elements that we talk about within our comprehensive plan are the same elements that we'll be talking about within each of these neighborhood center areas. I believe we have 26 neighborhood plans right now, but we'll probably have about 14, and we're going to call them neighborhood planning areas, going forward. And so, and as I'd mentioned, we'll try to start first with our future target area, which that would be the Gainesboro-Gilmer-Harrison area. And so, really looking forward to that. So, what does that look like? That looks like some work from staff, and putting together some overall thoughts about what the process will look like, working with our Planning Commission on that, working with some community leaders on what that might look like, and then rolling it out to the community. And again, it's an iterative process, where we sit down and we talk about each of these different elements with the entire community, or all those who choose to join us. Then we come back, we put some things together, and then we come back and present that to the community, and go through that iterative process again. And so, that happens a few times, before we have a neighborhood plan that then can come to Planning Commission, and then can come to City Council to be adopted. And so, I would anticipate, I mean, the process would take at least a year, 18 months, for each of the plans we're working on.
And when do you anticipate starting that process?
Would love to start that process this fall.
Okay. Just building on that, I know that two years ago, I can't remember timeline-wise, the council adopted the neighborhood centers plan, which I believe had, was it five or six?
Four or five?
Yeah. Can you talk a little bit about where we are in progress related to the neighborhood center plan?
I'll lead straight.
Let me start, and I'll pass it back to Catherine. So, there were four within the main neighborhood center plan, but we also adopted a Gainesboro community hub plan at the same time, so that's why we say four or five. So, there's really five that we're focused on. Within Gainesboro, our big focus has been using some of the ARPA funds that we received to do some work there. We have a big streetscape project that will begin here in a month or two, on Gainesboro Road, that'll be fairly significant. And we have other portions of that project that are underway, including homeowner rehab, which was a big part of what the community wanted to see. For the other neighborhood centers, we have some other things. We also have on Ninth Street, a streetscape improvement happening right now, and some other projects. But the big one that we've been looking into, and I'm going to pass this back to Catherine to discuss, is our partnership with Virginia Main Street. And I'll let you give a brief...
And so, planning staff, economic development, and members of our community have been working together with Virginia Main Street to develop a different kind of program here than our typical Virginia Main Street. And it's more of a hub, maybe a hub-and-spoke program would be the best way to think about it, because we have a number of different neighborhood center areas that could use the Main Street program for redevelopment. And so, so we've been working together on that, and we're working together with Main Street America as well. We're actually having site visits in June, so some people may be invited to participate in some of those. I hope that you would do so, if you receive an invitation for that in mid-June. But, again, working together with the community as far as what, how that development should unfold. Main Street, typically, you think about it as four different things. You think about it as design. You think about it as building the community support network structure, to be able to actually operate the Main Street. You think about it as advertising, letting people know about these different areas, and building, building support behind that. And so, it's a great comprehensive program, and so, we are, that's been a huge thing that has come out of our neighborhood centers plan, and we just got a $70,000 award. And so, that our economic development staff had put together an application for. And so, that will help unfold that even further, and build that network within our neighborhood centers.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Smith?
Catherine, do you know where those, where those going to be? Like, what centers are those going to be?
So, we had talked about the Gainesboro already. We had also talked about the 11th Street corridor. We also talked about, or we've talked before about, the Ninth Street corridor. There is also the West End area, and so, those are examples of some of those areas. And 24th and Melrose, yep, that's our fourth.
Good question. Just two other quick things. One of them is, I'd like for us to look into just a current reality that I'm not sure jives completely with zoning, and that is the influx of, I'll call them random, Airbnbs that are popping up, that are larger than they're zoned for, or they're popping up in residential areas where they're operating like hotels, but they're, these areas are not zoned for that. And so, I think it's important that we look at that. And I know there, there are a lot of, there are a number of people in the community who are running Airbnbs appropriately, who share some concern about equity, in terms of how these are being handled. So, hopefully, that's something we can look into, not only from a planning perspective, but from a licensing perspective, and making sure that all of these that are popping up are functioning in the appropriate way.
Absolutely. That's something that we can look into, and I think that's something that a number of different departments would be interested in. It could be a life safety issue, if it's operating as a hotel and not built as a hotel.
Well, and that's, safety is one of the issues, when, you know, some properties have to have suppression systems. have to have suppression systems. And if the capacity is larger than is allowed for, for the basic, you know, for a suppression system, then that's a concern. So we'll talk more about that. The last thing is, I appreciate this update. I know that the city has been working on a type of dashboard to share metrics with the community, and I'm hopeful that this type of thing can be included in that so that when citizens look to see the progress we're making in our comprehensive plan, they can perhaps click on an area and see, how are we doing in this plan? You know, it's, this isn't a plan that's just sitting on the shelf. We're really activating it and implementing it in some very effective ways. And so I think it helps for people to have access to that information. So I hope that this can be shared, whether it's on Plan Roanoke or, you know, publicized through the city's website with a direct link to it. But I know the metrics dashboard is in the works. I'm not sure where we are with the status of that, but I think this is really critical information that we need to share with the public and the public has access to.
We do plan to post this map on our website, and it is interactive in as much as you can click on some of those missing middle housing and get an example of what their floor plans look like or a picture of the finished product. So it's got a little bit of information within the map as well.
And to the degree, back to Mr. Nash's point and in part Vice Mayor McGuire, I think if we can reflect in that, of course, we, we can't always drive affordability unless we have low-income housing tax credits or a program like Homes for America that's working with the Rescue Mission to ensure that there's, that is on the lower scale of affordable housing. But to the degree that we can report out what that range of affordability is, I think that would be helpful, too. Obviously, as you said, the more, the increased inventory that we have, that's going to stabilize or maybe even lower values or rent prices, or just across-the-board marketability. So if there's a way to track some of that to the degree that we can, I think that would also be very informative.
I have a quick question. This is a great chart, charts. I really appreciate it. I'm curious regarding ADUs specifically, and it's a small number, so, and what you may offer is anecdotal, but I'm thinking, the question regarding Airbnbs kind of triggered something in my mind, which is, how many, if you can remember, of the ADUs that have been built are going to be available for rent versus, say, having family members move in to them for personal care or something like that? You may or may not know that, but because Airbnbs, forgetting the large-scale ones, but just somebody can take a home and turn it into an Airbnb, that's kind of taking property off the market for longer-term rental. And so I was just curious, with their ADU increase, if you've noticed any trends regarding people building these units to care for family, which is legit and a great, a great reason to do that, or if they were really being used for rental in the market?
I don't think we know the answer to that, but they can be used for both. So, and it's a valid point that they can be used for additional family members. I mean, traditionally, we call them mother-in-law suites for that reason, or they could be rented as a separate unit.
And of course, that can shift at any point, but I was just curious when people come to say this is what we want to do, if you have collecting any kind of metric on what that's used.
The ones that I have personally worked on are for rent.
Mr. O'Shane?
Yeah. So often for the last, I don't know, for a while, the term affordable housing is thrown around, I believe, so loosely. And to your point, it's different for everybody. It's different for every market. Have we identified in Roanoke what is affordable housing as far as a price range for whether it's purchase or rental? And then is that how we back into whether we're really achieving the goal? Because we can think we're talking about affordable housing, but it's not in line with what is in our market.
We do have HUD numbers that we use when we look at anywhere between 20 and 120% of our median area income that we use when we're looking at affordability. And typically, we're trying for, you're looking at 80% is the, what people are trying to meet on average. And so you have some that will be at 20 and some that could be over to still try to meet that, or they're trying to meet the 60%.
Ms. Gray, can I add to that?
Yes, please.
Typically, within the area median income that Ms. Gray defined, you would also to help identify a range of what's affordable. You would look at having people not be cost burden, which would be a high of 30% of their monthly income being used towards rent. So that's a guide to give you a sense of what's affordable, if you took that range. Would you approve of that?
Sure. And it's also different for each family because it's based on the number of family members in each family member, oh, sorry, living in that dwelling.
Yeah. Well, and I think it maybe goes to another point of, are our wages keeping up with affordable housing?
I think that brings up one of the other parts of the comprehensive plan that was important to our commissioners, important to the entire city, and that's our economic development piece that is absolutely a part of addressing affordable housing as well. And that's part of what the Main Street America program tries to address as well. It's really looking at some economic development in appropriate ways within our community.
Can I say something?
It goes back to the Main Street and the Village Centers and the Airbnbs. So I was in one the other day that was, it's legal, it's downtown, blah, blah, blah. But is there a legal way to prevent storefronts or first-floor units, like that face in downtown or in the Village Center, that become dead storefronts? Like, they're not, you can't see through them anymore. They've blocked out the windows, and it becomes an apartment. And in Baritat, we're working on a, I'm working on a deal, and the rules in Buchanan are, you can't have an Airbnb in the storefront. You have to have it upstairs or in the back, but you can't take up the commercial space as residential. And to me, it just, it kills the vibe of the storefront. There's several on Campbell, on the, you know, like 200 block, 100 block, that, and they screen out the, they put like the film on the windows. And I know it's legal now, but is there a legal way to make it not legal? Because I do think, and I've talked to lots of people in the neighborhood in Old Southwest and stuff about that, too. It kind of goes against the vibe and the goals of a Village Center or a downtown, like DRI-type stuff.
So one of the things I think that we have to address that is, we have some glazing and transparency regulations in our commercial areas, well, in all areas, but particularly commercial areas, that a certain percentage of the facade has to be transparent. So if they've made it non-transparent, they would be outside of that being approved.
But still, it kills, it kills the storefront, you know, and it makes, you're walking past a dead zone, just like you might as well have been walking past the bus station 20 years ago, you know?
I have an additional food for thought, not really a question, but, well, I guess it is a question. For the Sears at Valley View Mall, I know that's an anchor store, and across the country, a lot of malls are taking those anchor stores that are not really owned or property of the mall itself, but another entity, and they're transforming that into housing or other businesses, and the localities are engaging with those anchor store owners. And so, and that's a huge building in itself, two levels, huge parking around it, and it's in the middle of our city's maybe second-largest revenue generator, I think, outside of downtown in Valley View. And so are we talking about how do we approach that, that specific location? What do we do with that Sears in that parking lot when it comes to surface development of that parking lot and then the physical Sears itself?
So I have not been involved in any particular project on that. Again, that is privately owned, but staff would very much look forward to working with developers on that because that is something that you do see around the country, and it is something that can bring life back to mall areas where you have seen a reduced usage over time. So very supportive of that.
And I, and I think that's a good collaborative conversation with economic development.
Yeah. And then when we're talking about like the, what was the Plant Council voted on a few years ago that you were referring to, the four to five?
Neighborhood Center.
Neighborhood Centers. And I know it's not a neighborhood, but it's definitely a economic center. And if we can add a livability element to that, I think that would be a great win.
Ms. May?
Yes. Ms. Turner, and then Mr. Hagan.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission knew that there are a couple of things that we're working on from a staff perspective, one of which is, I recently published, advertised a position called the Housing Policy, Housing Programs and Policy Administrator Position, because I do think we need a holistic view of what we decide is affordable housing, housing, you know, as a whole. And that is what that position will be working on. And so one of the things that we do plan on coming back to, both the Planning Commission and Council, is a true housing plan. You know, what is our unmet housing need? The comprehensive plan was one element of that, but in terms of actually looking and defining what we holistically as a community feel that we need, whether it is, and what is affordable housing? You know, what is the unmet need here? So that is something that we will certainly be working on and bringing that plan back. I don't have a timeframe because I don't have that position filled yet, but I hope to come back to you within the coming months.
Thank you. Mr. Hagan?
So I have a slight concern about the way that the by-right usage and the zoning amendments have happened. And the reason why is that I've found, and this is obviously slightly anecdotal, that when people don't seemingly feel like they have a voice in what's going on in their neighborhoods, they tend to get litigious. And speaking as an attorney, we like to get paid, so regardless of the merits of a case or something like that, you know, lawyers will always get paid, which presumably would be passed on to, or that cost would be absorbed by partially the developer. Is there any mechanism or plan, like, I'm curious as to how getting, or keeping the by-right, or, excuse me, yes, keeping the by-right would allow for more affordability?
I think if I understand your question, the key part is, how does allowing more development by right?
Yeah.
Improve affordability?
Yes, especially in the context of the larger economics.
And I won't speak to who decides to be litigious or not.
Yeah.
Because we've certainly seen that with things that had to go to Planning Commission as well. So that's not a black and white thing. I think that by allowing development by right, you allow a more surety for a developer to go into a project. So they can look at a property and say, you know, instead of a single house, I could build a duplex there. That's allowed by right. I can start working with an architect, get the plans done. You know, this is not something that is going to be stopped in a rezoning process. And so by allowing that by-right use, you allow that confidence of a developer to go into a project. Likewise, with our accessory dwelling units, we've allowed anyone to build that in their backyard. If they have the right amount of space and have the ability to do so, they can build an accessory dwelling unit. We worked with a grant we received from AARP. We worked with the local Institute of Architects to have a competition, a design competition, where we put our top four winners who designed accessory dwelling unit, we put their plans on our website to make it more accessible for a property owner, for a potential developer, to see what plans are out there, what they could do to sort of help spur that type of development. So that's why we think that by allowing missing middle by right, that's how we continue to spur that type of development.
Okay. Thank you. One other quick question. Is there any legal, this might be a question for Mr. Spencer. To Mr. Sibley's point about opaque, is there anything that would prevent us from doing something like that or preventing a residence on the first floor of downtown zoned?
And that is part of the zoning ordinance that you can go in and you can regulate through the zoning and understand that there may be some properties that will be grandfathered. You've heard that term. And that means that as long as they maintain and continue that use that was previously legal, you're going to be precluded from coming in with a zoning amendment that will then tell that individual, okay, you need to change how you're using your property because we've changed the zoning ordinance. However, if someone has it clear and they were thinking they wanted to make it opaque and put in VRBO in the first floor and whatever, you can then prohibit that because you've put in place a zoning ordinance that says all these first-floor in this particular zoning district have to be used for retail space. So there are ways to address this issue. And it's a matter of the Planning Commission, Council, and Planning Department coming up with the best method and means they believe benefits the city of Roanoke and its residents.
Thank you. Ms. Powers?
So back to your point, I've heard a developer talk to me just this week, or last week, about the economy and the cost of materials and how they've gone up. So they've actually had to go back into current development, and one of them is right over in Wilton, that they've had to relook at their design and what the cost is going to be. So as we talk about affordable housing, and let's not forget, our assessments go up, so the taxes on the property is going up. We've all seen homeowners' insurance go up. So if you're looking at rental property, all of that's going to come into play to what is going to cost the rent for that. So, you know, again, I understand what everybody's saying about affordable housing, and I hear what you're saying, unless we can really work with Rent Acpre Development, a housing authority, hopefully, pray that the government, the federal government doesn't continue to cut our housing stuff, then, you know, some of the affordable housing isn't going to come as quick as we'd like to see it, I think. And I welcome anybody's comments on that to correct me on that, but, you know, just as I've said, and myself, my husband and I are looking at downsizing, and we'd like to have a one-floor plan in the city finding something that we can afford. And what we've been seeing is eight, $900 to $1 million. And, you know, let's face it, as we get older and senior citizens, we can't afford that. So thank you all for this. It's been very, very informative, and I appreciate the city staff and the work that you have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all very much. This has been very helpful, very informative. We're grateful to the Planning Commission for your work. I had no idea that we had five pretty new people on this. Frank, you're the, are you one of the longer-serving ones on this?
I'm one of the ones who's been the longest, along with Pamela Smith, Vice Chair.
Right, Pamela, right. So thank you all, and I hope you're, you're still staying on to provide some continuity.
As long as Catherine will have me on, yeah.
All right. Well, we are going to take just a five-minute break after we adjourn this meeting. Council, if you'll come back to this table, we'll just continue our briefings and business from here, okay? Five-minute break. Do we need to adjourn the commission first?
Yes.
Okay? If you'll adjourn the commission.
We're adjourned.
All right? And Council is in recess for five minutes. We'll reconvene our morning informal session for city council. We have a few items for action that are all related to some closed meetings. First is a communication from my office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by the council pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 Code of Virginia as amended. A list of those vacancies we'll be discussing are included in the agenda. I need a motion and a second, please.
I need a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Powers and Mr. Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. The second is a communication from the city attorney requesting that city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry in an adjacent locality, the location of which will have an impact on the residents of the city, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. This is pursuant to section 2.2-3711A5 Code of Virginia as amended. Need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. The third is a communication from the city attorney requesting that city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding the finances of both the city and the schools, requiring the provision of legal advice by outside legal counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711A7 Code of Virginia as amended. Need a motion and a second, please.
Move the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nash and Ms. Powers. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. Are there any items listed on the two o'clock city council agenda requiring any discussion or clarification at this time? Any topics of discussion by any members of council at this time? All right, then we will move into our briefings, and I will, first of all, invite our director of real estate valuation, Mr. Casey Bratton, and I believe he has some of his team here with us today. Welcome, Mr. Bratton.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, and honorable members of council. It gives me a great pleasure to stand before you today and talk to you about the real estate tax abatement program, affectionately known as the rehab program, and an update. This program typically sunsets, so this briefing is based on the sunset provision. So, I want to go through this real quickly, and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask at the end. David Collins and I have been working on this. Our team has been working together on this since around November 2024. So, hopefully the changes that are made here will help the city continue to be successful in this program. The background is, the program was first adopted in 1981. It was under the commissioner revenue, and then in 2000, it moved to the office of real estate valuation. The sunset provision started in 2000 as well, and there's a demolition provision that actually provides that if you demolish a structure that was, at that time, with 10,000 or less, if you returned it back to 120% of the median value of the neighborhood, you would get the abatement as well. Then, there's no increase, there was no increase in the dwelling units in 2000, but that provision changed in 2010. And I surmise that that was a direct result of the program, what we were doing in downtown at the time, bringing on new units. So, we wanted to be able to provide the developers in downtown the opportunity to participate in the rehab program, and that was one, that was where that changed. And apartments came up, apartments was under the residential side, but if you think about it, the residential increase has to be 40% or more. The commercial side is 60% or more. So, we wanted to have the ability to, we wanted to encourage apartment developers to increase the value by 60% instead of 40%. So, that's why that changed. And the multifamily duplexes followed suit in 2020, and they were moved under commercial to meet the 60% increase in value. The strategic goals for us through this, this, this period is we want to consolidate the real estate taxing center program, repeal outdated or ineffective provisions, standardize key elements, definitions, eligibility, and compliance, and establish target programs to address sector-specific gaps and encourage real estate growth. For example, this morning, you were briefed on the number of brand-new apartments coming online. If we were having an issue there, our office and through this program would seek to help out by providing incentives to match, go along with the rehab program, use the rehab program as a mechanism for doing that. But as you see, I mean, we had, I think it was approximately 1,200 new units coming online. If you take in consideration over the last three to five years, you've had approximately 1,000 units come online. So, you're at 2,200, effectively 2,200 new units in the last five years. The tax abatement program applications by year, if you look at this, this is pretty, it's pretty, the graphic describes it in a way that allows for, you don't understand what's happened by year, but I tracked it back to 2019, pre-COVID. If you look at the interest rates in 2019, it was 4.13%. And 2020, interest rates were 3.38%, 2021, 2.9%. And now, we're at 4.5, in 2022, 4.56%. The last two years, we're looking at 6.48% interest. You know, developers, you talked about it earlier, developers look at what they can borrow money for and what they, what that investment looks like, and that's how to get their return. It's not as attractive, so we're seeing a lot of the, we're seeing some fall off in the numbers here as far as applications. If you look at this tax, tax abatement by use, if you look at there, out of 286 of those, 180 are single-family dwellings since 2007. So, you can, and that's something, if you look at it, 42 multifamily, mixed retail and residential, that's typically downtown. So, this just gives you an idea, this graph gives you an idea what the use is and how the, how the program is used. This is by quadrant. If you look at it by quadrant, the majority of them, 72% are in southwest, 2% in northeast, 15% in northwest, and 11% in southeast. So, Division 5 of the city code is changing, and what, some of the summary of the changes are as follows. We're going to program termination dates, update application process, single-family eligibility has changed, multifamily and commercial and mixed-use eligibility has changed, and then the demolition provision has been updated. So, tax, as of today, if approved, the termination date will be July 1, 2030. Terms are five years citywide, seven years in conservation districts, and rehabilitation districts. As far as the residential, residential percentage change, it's 40%, it's remained unchanged, and commercial is 60%. That's the minimum. So, they have to increase the value of property residentially by 40% minimum, and then 60% commercial. The other thing that's changed is the application fee, and the reason that is that state code, the state code compliant. So, it's $125 for single-family. The other aspect that the program has changed and is based on just some previous incidences where citizens were saying that they were not aware of the program, and we need to take ownership of some of that, in the sense that we haven't been marketing the program as we had in years past, primarily because of COVID. So, what we've done is we've added a provision where the director, I, can decide whether or not somebody gets on the program within certain parameters. One of those parameters is going to be, you can't be substantially complete, and then whatever the assessment is at the time that you apply is going to be the value that you're going to be, that's going to be your start value. And the reason I say that is because a lot of times in some of these homes, they benefit from having a preliminary inspection because we get to update the condition of the property. They, if they're willing to forego that, then we'll help, we'll be, we're happy to add them to the program. But if you're substantially, if you're substantially complete, we're not going to add you to the program. It's just something that's been asked, and in years past, previous directors have allowed it. I just thought it needed to be codified in this new, in this new version of the code. For single-family dwellings, the previous, the previous eligibility required that the property be built before January 1 of 1970, I changed that to 30 years. In previous, in previous eligibility requirements, it was 30 years, 35, 40 years, and 25 years. And for some reason, we went to January, January 1, 1970. When you consider the fact that 60% of the properties in the city were built between 1929 and 1969, I mean, it's appropriate that we actually do that. But also, some of the products built post-1970 are probably ones that really need to have the opportunity to be rehabbed. The other aspect of it is there was a cap on the value of a residential property in the previous rehab program. We repealed that, $250,000. I think it's fair citywide to have an opportunity to rehab your property and not just be limited to that. But also, if you keep, if you're keeping track with values, I mean, they're going up, so we can't keep pace anyway. So, it's going to limit the number of properties that fit in that category, and it doesn't hurt us to eliminate the cap. I've truncated the commercial neighborhood, commercial eligibility with the commercial neighborhood zoning in conservation and rehab districts. And you'll understand this a little bit better once we get to the map, but right now, same, same deal with it. You know, 30 years older, the CN in conservation and rehab districts, the commercial cap was $800,000. We increased it to a million dollars. And that, they would, if you're under a million dollars, you get seven years. Over a million dollars, you get five years for commercial. Residential, again, we eliminated the cap on residential because just we're trying to keep, we can't keep pace with the appreciation of value of that period of time. So, it's smart for us to eliminate that. So, there are no limitations there. So, just to give you an idea of commercial neighborhood and zoning and conservation and rehab districts, you think about Brandon and Wasina, those, those characters, you know, the characteristics go along with having that neighborhood village center. But we want to encourage that throughout other areas of our city in the conservation and rehab districts. Those areas are targeted for Those areas are targeted for investment, and here's a map of those right now, where they would qualify. This map, if you see the dark structures in the map there, they're going to provide you with information about properties that qualify, and as we market this program to citizens, to developers and property owners in that area, we're hoping to get some return. But you think about Ganesboro, Villa Heights, Melrose Rugby, and Belmont, those are some of the areas that can take advantage of it, and if you have a CN zone property in those areas, you're going to get the seven-year abatement. What we want to do is market and give those areas an opportunity to have what you have in Grandin and Wasina. So the demolition provision has been updated as well. Before, it had, it was $10,000 or less that you could take the structure down and increase the, return a new structure, and at 100% of the median value, you would get a benefit of the program. Now it's at $75,000, and the reason why we did that is directly related to the land bank. The land bank cap is $75,000, so it allows us to keep pace with what, you know, what we could in turn turn over to another developer. Now this new, I want to take some time here, this new, this is new, 5C, Section 5C, and I have David here to, if you want to ask him any questions about this, but one of the things we realize is that from 2020 to 2023, the city lost over 609 hotel rooms. And by losing those hotel rooms, we lost the revenue that goes along with it. We also lost the economic opportunity. So what we've developed here is a hotel tax abatement program. Okay, so the property has to be either new or substantially rehabilitated, it cannot be, it could not have been a hotel in its previous economic life, and it has to be 30 years or older. You have to build it back at 100% of the comparable hotel value, and that would mean, for example, if you had an extended stay, we keep track of what extended stays of value per room, has to be 120% of that. You must increase the net hotel rooms. That means that no one could qualify this unless it's increasing the rooms. If you want to rehab a hotel, we have a rehab abatement program for it already, so you have to increase the number of rooms, and you cannot, you cannot demolish historic structures. The abatement is going to be five years citywide and 15 years in enterprise, zone, conservation, and rehab districts. And the reason for that is those are areas that we target for reinvestment, so it's only smart that we provide those, those areas with this opportunity. And the effective dates are July 1, 2025, and it's set to expire July 1 of 2030, or 500 rooms, whichever comes first. This will just give you an idea of where we've lost rooms over the last five years. We lost to Sheridan, which has turned into apartments, Days Inn Apartments, and we lost to Ramada that was completely demolished. This is a case study. This case study's been in the works now. We've started this program, we actually started talking about this program three years ago. So this case study was a combination of our office working with economic development and management and budget. Some of these numbers may need to be, you know, would probably need to be updated, but I didn't want to confuse, you know, what we'd already established by just by doing this initially. So what you're looking at is, let's look at year one. Year one, this is assuming the value of the property is $20 million approximately. So if you look at that, you have $241,000 a year in property taxes, but that doesn't, that does not account, what you need to look at here is the occupancy tax at $270,000, local sales tax at $147,000 approximately, and food and beverage tax at $109,000. The net from adding all those together and taking out the property tax is $526,900 approximately. That's in year one. So what I'm encouraging us to do is forego the real estate tax piece of it, which, to attain the occupancy tax, local sales tax, and food and beverage. The other thing that's not accounted for in this model is what folks spend when they walk out of the door to go to your local restaurants and retail stores. So that's not lost in this model, and there are properties around us, there are three hotel projects in various states are ready right now, trying to come online, and one of the things that's happening with hotels is that they're running to an issue, you heard me talk about interest rates earlier, they're running to an issue where they can't get the, can't get the support from the banks, the banks are requiring them to have more equity. The average equity in a project is about 20%. We've talked to hotel owners, several of them that are trying to bring it online here in the city, they're looking at 40%, so they're going to have to come up with the other 20% that's not inclusive of the value. So one of the things that this will do is help them close that gap, hopefully on the funding in a way that says, hey, I know I'm guaranteed to at least get qualified for this program, and so if I'm able to qualify for this program, I can go back to the bank. 15 years is substantial. The average time that you finance a commercial project is 20 years. So it's a substantial benefit to the hotel, now I'm not, I'm not sure that they're going to, I mean, let's see what they do when they get their hands on it, but at the same time, at least we're doing our part in saying we want those rooms back in the city. All right, so if you look at a total, the total projected revenue over 14 years, if we include all tax, would be about $14 million. The net, if we just eliminate the $3.6 million in taxes associated with the product, with the real estate, you're looking at $10.5 million approximately. So to me, it's the sort of program that's a win, and it's the sort of program that based on this, the process us offering this is based on us providing the sort of incentives that'll bring these projects back online. If we had issues with apartments, we would certainly do something like this. You know, if we have issues with homes, that's one of the reasons we did that. We know we have an agent housing stock, so why not provide incentives for that program? This is, this is new, it's something that we developed over, it's been three years in the making, and I hope it meets with your approval, okay? At this point, I'd like to bring David Collins up to kind of go over a briefing memo, some of the things that I did not outline here, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bratton. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Collins.
Good morning, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, Members of Council, and Ms. Turner. Mr. Bratton has done an excellent job in describing the proposed amendments to the city code that we are requesting that council consider through adoption of an ordinance that would reestablish the rehab exemption for another five years from July 1 through June 30. The changes that are being made in addition to the ones that Mr. Bratton mentioned are primarily related to quality-of-life improvements and making it updated consistent with state code. For example, there are several references in the ordinance that refer to the Commissioner of Revenue, but since rehab exemption is handled through the Director of Real Estate Evaluations Office, that has been changed to reflect it's handled through that office. One of the other changes that is being made is that formerly the code rehab exemption required the property owner to be consistent and current with all taxes owed on property that they owned. To assist the taxpayer, we are amending that to reflect only current on the taxes on the property that is the subject of the exemption. And those are essentially it compared to the ones that Mr. Bratton mentioned, they are further outlined on the briefing memo that council has. Mr. Spencer, myself, and Mr. Bratton are here to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Council, questions?
I have a question. So this might be for both David and Mr. Bratton. And we have talked about this for a long time, and thank you very much for doing this. You've done a great job on it. So for the ordinance that we just passed with the derelict and boarded-up property, you know, some of that property, the taxes are paid, but, you know, it's not developed. Would this be a program that as the current owners would try to sell this property to someone, would the new person be able to qualify for these exemptions under these changes?
Well, yes, they would be able to. I don't think that would be, that would preclude them from it. I think it's, and actually, it's a great selling point. It's one of the things that we wanted to put in the hands of the city, to be able to, you know, package this in some of the, you know, some of the tax sale properties.
Right, and that was where I was going. I think this really comes into play and works together with that program as well to help people do that, and, you know, I just know from my years of being in the Treasurers Office, a lot of people have property that they would like to rehabilitate it because it is falling apart, but yet they can't afford to do that, so I think this will help and allow them to be able to up, you know, rehabilitate those properties, so thank you for this.
Mr. Hagan?
On slide 12, it looked like that there was a difference between two color-coded, I'm wondering what those are, like, why?
The blue and the red, the green, they're both conservation and rehab district, so that's the difference.
Okay, cool. That's what I figured.
That's the combined area.
Awesome.
Other questions? Thank you for this. I mean, you've identified some of the conundrum that we're in as a city. While we've lost some hotel units, we've gained some housing units, but we still need hotel units.
Yes.
So it's, that's part of the challenge, but I, this is really thorough, and thank you all for your work on this.
Mayor Cobb, one of the things I wanted to clarify is that under the hotel exemption program, it will terminate after 500 rooms.
500 rooms, or five years, whichever.
Right, right, thank you. All right, thank you all very much. Our next briefing is from our city attorney regarding proposed city code amendment, Section 23.2-3 procurement authority, and I see Ms. Thomas back there as well. Who's going to lead us on this one?
Ms. Karini.
Ms. Karini, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor, Members of City Council. I hope this will be very, very brief. In this current General Assembly, the state has adopted and passed a new state law that will allow all IT contracts that a public body enters into, if any of those contracts have terms that are in conflict with Virginia law, those terms will now be void, which is very exciting, because we enter into a lot of IT contracts with California companies, these huge companies, Motorola, Google, et cetera, that do not like to negotiate with us. So this law is very exciting because it will make those terms automatically void, things like venue for litigation, it won't have to be California, it can now, has to be Virginia, or interpretation of law can be Virginia law and not California law, or Alaska law, or Hawaii. So it'll be interesting to see how these companies respond to this law, they may not like some of it. I'm going to also argue that some of these, that this law will also apply to the fact that the city cannot indemnify other third parties, that one, that's not a specific part of the state law. So the major part of this law, the reason I'm here today, is that in order for this state law to apply to us, we have to adopt it by the governing body, so I have included a code amendment in your package that puts this, the provisions of the state law directly into our procurement code, and I have worked with our Director of Technology, Vanessa Borr, and our interim purchasing manager, Tony Thomas, and we're all very excited, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
I just have a comment. I'm so glad to see this because we always had to deal with this, especially when we had to do our contracts with banking, and when we put the new tax and treasury system in, you know, there was a little bit of back and forth with that, so I'm glad to see this.
Yes, me too. It was, the lobbying group of the IT directors were certainly involved to get this passed.
Great, thank you. So both of these, thank you, Ms. Karini, both briefings were just that, briefings, we are not taking any action on either of those today. All right, any further questions on this? All right, then we will stand in recess until 2:00 PM for a closed meeting in the council's conference room. Thank you all.